All right, we'll call the Belvidere City Council Committee of the Home Meeting of May 12th, 2025 to order. If the clerk will help me with the roll call, please.
Albertini.
Here.
Brereton.
Here.
Flurry.
Here.
Frank.
Here.
Gramkowski.
Here.
Hoynes.
Here.
McGee.
Here.
Montalbano.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Stevens.
Here.
Ten present.
Thank you. We don't have anybody registered for public comment this evening under public forum, a National Police Week proclamation. So, this is National Police Week. I have a proclamation that I wanted to present on behalf of the city of Belvidere, the city council, and all of our residents here. Chief Woody, I would expect you would be honored to come up and receive this proclamation. I'd be honored to have you. So, the proclamation reads as follows. Whereas National Police Week in America was created to honor and recognize the sacrifice and contributions made by police officers in communities both large and small, and whereas National Police Week held every year in May was created in 1962 through a proclamation issued by then-President John F. Kennedy, and whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the problems, duties, and responsibilities of their police department, and that members of our police department recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence or disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression or intimidation, and whereas the police department of the city of Belvidere has grown to be a modern and scientific law enforcement agency which unceasingly provides a vital public service, and now therefore I, Mayor of the city of Belvidere, Clinton Morris, call upon all citizens of Belvidere and upon all patriotic civil and educational organizations to recognize the week of May 12th through May 18th as National Police Week, in which all of our people may commemorate police officers past and present who by their faithful loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to their communities and in doing so have established for themselves an enviable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all citizen. In witness thereof, I here unto set my hand and cause a seal of the city of Belvidere to be affixed this 12th day of May 2025. Chief, I wanted to give this to you, but I also wanted to say how grateful we as a community and as a nation are for law enforcement. Without law enforcement, you've heard me say this many times, you have chaos. And if you have chaos, then you lose everything else. Everything else suffers. And I certainly appreciate you, chief, with your leadership and your rank and file and all the efforts you put into making sure Belvidere is the best community to live in, and I'm grateful. And on behalf of the city of Belvidere and behalf of the city council, I want to thank you and please convey this to all of your officers. Appreciate it.
Yes, Mayor, you have said many, many times without law enforcement, you have chaos. And these officers that we honor this week were, had fallen to try and prevent that chaos. But I think it's important not to just remember those police officers who have fallen, but also those families who have sacrificed because their support allowed their loved ones to stand on that line between good and evil. So, on behalf of the law enforcement profession, I want to thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank the city council, and I want to thank the Belvidere Boone County community for all of your support over the years. We can't do it without you. Thank you.
All right. Flipping the page, reports of officers, boards, and special committees. Building, planning, zoning, unfinished business, we have none. Item two, building, planning, zoning, new business. Item A, building department update. Mr. Countryman, good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to start my update as given the fiscal year of last year. First, we had 19 code enforcement violations for $1,512.50 in fines, 104 electrical registrations, 926 total permits for a construction value of $141,108,178. Fire department review fees of 42. We had a total permit income of $640,252.67. 30 enterprise zone discounts for $104,949.57 for total permit fees of $745,202.24. Of those, 168 were commercial, 158, that number can't be right. Anyway, so of those, we had 14 single-family homes. I read that wrong. 168 commercial industrial permits and 743 residential. For the month of April, we've done a couple of code enforcement violation fines, two equaling $727.50, 33 electrical registrations, 108 permits issued for a value of construction of $66,171,574. One enterprise zone discount, 14 of those were commercial, 94 residential. One single-family residence, some projects under review or we're getting ready to permit, or some more duplexes on Fuller, the Chipotle. Inspections are going on at the courthouse, plan review for the admin building for the county. Construction is pre-study out at Deer Hills, and the preserve has now started submitting plans for permits. Some, one restaurant that's getting ready, or shop that's getting ready to open is the ice cream shop at 128 South State. And that is my report. I'll answer any questions.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Countryman. Any questions for Kip? Now would be the time to ask. Okay. Thank you, Kip.
Thank you.
Item B, building, planning, building, Boone County government building permit fees. I place this on the agenda because there's been some question about whether or not the city of Belvidere, me in particular, has the right, or it is in their job duties, to waive fees for the county. I think there was a misconception that because that had been done in the past, that that should be carried on and be continued to do as business as usual. Well, it's not, and I haven't done that. And there's a lot of things that I have not done since 2021. That's one of them. There is no way, and I've told the county this, I've had conversations with Chairman Johnson, I've had conversations with board director or board member, Mr. Wahlberg, and I have told them that that isn't my job, that isn't my responsibility. Some people on the county board seems to think it is. As a matter of fact, they treated me very, very unfairly and very cowardice. And they had pointed out that it is my duty to waive them, and it's not. Of course, it's not. But you have things dating all the way back some 35 years that were made as an excuse that the mayor was being unfair. The mayor actually is doing it. I'm actually doing my job. And I represent the city of Belvidere, the taxpayers of Belvidere, and I think I've made that quite clear. If you want them waived, or you wanted them waived last July, you should have called me. Nobody ever called me, including you. Nobody. So, business doesn't go through, business doesn't go through the building department. It may have gone through the building department in the past. I think former mayor had waived some of the fees, but he didn't sign the document. He didn't sign it. And he wasn't authorized to sign it either. It takes council actions, but it certainly doesn't go to a building department director. You don't, you don't scale that down to the building department. So, that was never even done correctly, as far as I'm concerned. It's probably malfeasance of office. But it should have never been done, and it was a terrible example to set. And the city of Belvidere taxpayers are the ones that this council, I may remind, who they work for. We pay county taxes as city residents. We pay county taxes, too. We share a lot of the expenses that we have at the county. But for the mayor to just be asked to waive any of those fees is ridiculous. And it may have been done in the past, but that, as I said, that isn't the business that we should be doing, not for the residents of Belvidere. And the criticism that's been levied at me by really cowards in the media, and I'm telling you that, people on Facebook and people in writing newsletters to the editor, which are totally unfounded and totally untrue. And I do take exception to it, and I think anybody who's set up here would. So, if anybody has any other comments regarding this, I hope I've made it clear, my job is to represent the city of Belvidere taxpayers, and that's exactly what I've been hired to do, and I think the council has as well. So, anybody else have any comments, any questions, or what have you? So. Okay. All right. Excuse me? Yeah? Alderman Albertini?
Thank you very much, sir. Since 2021, as the, prior to this instance, has the county done any other construction in the city other than this courthouse? So, there's been no other...
Which other one would you be talking about?
Pardon me?
Which other one would you be talking about?
Well, I mean, I have nothing, I'm asking, are there any instances where they've done other work since 2021?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, and that's, I just was unclear.
Unless you know some that I don't.
I do not. And I don't know anything you don't know.
Okay. All right. Okay. We will move on. Item C, planning department update. Ms. Del Rose.
Thank you, Mayor.
Ms. Del Rose?
There is one public hearing for April. That is tomorrow for the daycare center on Pearl Street Road. In May, so far, I have one case for a construction company relocating to Jackson Street that needs outdoor storage. Site plan reviews are for the restaurants that Kip mentioned, and zoning verification letters are standing consistent. Addressing is picking up now that we have new construction going on. Historic preservation has been quite busy. They awarded grants totaling about $3,500, and now they're picking up their fundraising efforts to replenish their coffer so that they can give grants out again next year. The grants are for facade improvements for landmark properties, helping the homeowners that need tuck pointing on their chimneys, repainting their wood siding, and stuff like that. Heritage Days is ramping up. I actually just got the Friday night band booked at Parade Entertainment, and I started updating the Facebook page today. Otherwise, I sat on scholarship interviews for the Community Action Agency. They offer scholarships for Boone and Winnebago County students and sent out notices to over 100 property owners for the downtown facade grant program.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Del Rose. Any questions for Gina? Alderwoman Frank?
Thank you, Mayor. I ask this all the time. What about the car wash on 76 and State Street? Is it still coming?
I have not heard anything in probably about a month from them. So, I do believe they got a response letter letting them know changes that needed to be made to their plans in order to get building permits, and I can only hazard a guess that they are in the middle of modifying those plans to meet the response letter.
Okay. That sign is, as I've often said, is a perennial sign. Sometimes that thing grows every, every, every year, I guess. But I don't know what's going to happen with that, Alderwoman Frank, but time will tell, I guess. We'll see. Item three, Public Works, unfinished business. We have none. Public Works, new business. Public Works update. Director Anderson, good evening.
Evening. Thank you, Mayor. Few things. Our MFT bids for our street overlays and our pavement markings will be opened up tomorrow. Our rebid on our sidewalk work will be opened up early next week, and the results of those bids will be brought to the next committee for review and, and action by the council. And then for all of our aldermen, especially our newly-elected aldermen, if you want to give me a contact, contact me at your convenience. We can set up some tours of our Public Works facilities. We have some wonderful things that you would probably get, find very interesting. Our wastewater treatment plant, our well houses, street department will give you the whole tour. So, when we talk about all of the things that we like to spend money on or need to spend money on to update and maintain throughout our city, then you'll know exactly what we're talking about. So, again, give me, give the office a call. We'll set some appointment times up, and we can conduct those tours. And those are available, open to any and all aldermen. That's all I got, sir.
All right. Thank you, Director Anderson. And I had taken a tour down at the wastewater treatment plant, and there were a lot of things that I really didn't know. I didn't know how, for instance, the bugs work that make the wastewater treatment plant function. I had no idea of that and how important it is. And we had had a death in a lot of the bugs that were down there and what it took to reestablish the plant, put it back in working order. So...
And how expensive those bugs are.
Yeah, they are expensive. So, thank you, Brent, and so anybody who hasn't gone through the wastewater treatment plant or the Public Works Department, feel free. I know Brent is a great host and will take you on a tour. Thank you, Brent. Item B, manhole adjustment project.
In your... Memo in your packet. Our current budget includes $300,000 for phase two of our manhole adjustments. This project will repair approximately 125 manholes that have been identified by the street department. Attached is a memo from, proposal from CES in the amount of $25,000 to complete the design engineering bid documents for the manhole adjustment project phase two. I would recommend approval of proposal from CES in the amount of $25,000 to complete the engineering for the manhole adjustment project phase two. This work will be paid for from line item 41-5, 110-80-20. As you may recall, the initial first round, 300,000, that we did this last year, the cost for the engineering was 35,000. 25,000 this year represents the effort that's going to be done, that they have to go out and engineer and determine elevations and things on each of the 125 manholes. The bid documents themselves will all remain the same, hence the reduction in the cost for this round.
All righty. With that being said, recommend approval of the proposal from CES in amount of 25,000, as Director Anderson stated. Motion by Alderman Peterson, second by Alderman Stevens. Thank you both. Any comments, any questions on the motion on the floor? Please feel free to ask. Alderman Peterson?
Director Anderson, do each of the 125 manholes, do they get some unique design engineering for every one, as far as the deficiency in them?
All depends on what they find when they go to survey it, whether it's, if they can do it flush, if it has to, if it's casting, if it has to be rebuilt, a portion of the manhole itself, or if it's just a matter of resetting where it was and then repairing the roadway around it with the asphalt patch. So, that's what they do. They go out and take the elevations to make that determination.
Thanks. Okay. Any other questions from the council? Okay. Hearing none, we have a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And if there's any opposed. All right. Motion passed. And we have item four C. In your packet is a memo from Director Anderson dated 5/5/25 regarding cathodic protection 2025 maintenance agreement. Director Anderson?
Memo in your packet. We've got a proposal from Corp. Pro for our 2025 maintenance for cathodic protection, which is installed in our three elevated water storage tanks and the ground reservoir at well number eight, which controls the electrolysis and what electrolysis does to those structures. I would recommend entering into an agreement with Corp. Pro for the 2015 cathodic protection maintenance program at a cost of $3,900, based on their proposal dated March 3rd, 2025. This work will be paid for from line item 61-5, 810-60-40.
All right. If I could have a motion to that effect, please. Motion by Alderman Hoynes, second by Alderman Peterson. Thank you both. Any questions, any comments on the motion on the floor? Feel free to ask. Alderman Peterson?
Thanks, Mayor. Goodness, Director Anderson, this is mainly going to involve services, right? This, this isn't going to include any hardware if they find damage?
Correct. They'll, they'll do the inspection stuff, and then we get the recommended list on if there's things that have to be, if there's diodes or anything that have to be replaced as part of, through the inspection process. Similar to what we do with our tornado sirens maintenance agreement, they'll come through, do inspections, they'll give us the list, and those are done on basically time and material.
And it's an annual thing?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions regarding the motion on the floor? All right. Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
If there's any opposed. Motion passed. Thank you. And also, we have item four D, Kishawaki Riverfront Path Extension. Again, in your packet dated May 6th, 2025, is a memo from Director Anderson regarding the ballards installation. It says Kishawaki Riverfront Path Extension. That's an error. It is the ballards, ballards installation. Director Anderson?
Thank you, Your Honor. I apologize for the cut and paste error there when I was putting the memos together.
Happens all the time.
So, our DCEO safety and infrastructure grant includes the installation of 25 removable ballards at various locations in our downtown area to be used during festivals and events. We've got a proposal from Arc Design Resources in the amount of $7,600 for the engineering exhibit at each installation location in preparation of the bid manual. So, these ballards are, the foundation goes in the ground, is probably going to be anywhere from 24 to 42 inches in depth, probably 24 inch square perhaps, size-wise. Be flush mounted. The ballards are meant, you can pull them in, you can install them during the events and pull them out and cap them when they're not, not being in use. We've had the ballards for a couple of years now, and we finally, the grants finally come into us to allow for the installation. So, I would recommend approval of the proposal from Arc Design Resources in the amount of $7,600 for the Ballard installation project, and this work will be paid for from grant funds.
Okay. If I could have the motion, please. Motion by Alderwoman Gramkowski, second by Alderman Stevens. Thank you both. Any questions, any comments regarding the ballards and the motion on, on hand? Feel free to ask. Alderman Flurry?
Thank you, Mayor. So, Brent, with having these ballards installed, is that going to be less time-consuming for Public Works to install those versus putting up the T-barriers? Or is it working in conjunction with the T-barriers?
They'll be working in conjunction with the barriers and stuff that we already do. So...
All right. Thank you. Any other questions from the council, from the committee? Feel free to ask. The ballards, when we had ordered the barricades, we had ordered, I don't know, 73 of those or something, I think, Director Anderson, we had ordered those, and those were in, after they had the, the person who ran through the parade, Christmas parade in Wisconsin, and these were the next follow-up to make sure that we did everything we could possibly do to ensure that the public did not have, somebody accessed the parade route and caused that kind of catastrophe that they caused in Wisconsin. So, we, if there's any other questions about that, that is the history behind it, and we use them all. All right. Hearing none, we have a motion and a second. We have a motion on the floor then regarding the proposal, approval of the proposal from Arc Design Resources in the amount of $7,600 for the Ballard installation, and that is grant funding that we were able to obtain. So, thank you to everybody that did work on that. I certainly appreciate it. I know the residents do. If there are no other questions, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
And if there's any opposed. Okay, motion passed. Thank you. And item... Item E, Kishawaki Riverfront Path Extension. In your packet was a memo from Director Anderson dated 5/6/25 regarding the easements that will need to be obtained in order to connect that path, extend the path and connect it. Director Anderson?
Thank you, Your Honor. Memo in the packet, we need to acquire easements from three property owners to complete the Kishawaki Riverfront Path project from State Street to Main Street. Attached to this memo is a proposal from Rally Appraisal in the amount of $9,600 to complete the appraisals for the following three parcels. I would recommend approval of the proposal from Rally Appraisal in the amount of $9,600 to complete the three appraisals required to obtain permanent and temporary easements to construct the Kishawaki Riverfront Path extension. This work will be paid for from grant funds and capital funds, and I believe attached to the proposal is a map with the property owners identified, highlighted in yellow for the three parcels that we need to acquire easements from. All owners have been contacted and indicated they were in favor of the project. So, our next step is to have the appraisals done and then enter into those negotiations to obtain those easements.
Okay. All right. If I could get a motion to that effect, please. Motion by Alderman McGee. Thank you. Second by Alderwoman Gramkowski. Thank you both. Any questions regarding the motion on the floor? Please feel free to ask. I know that we were fortunate enough to get a grant. Senator, State Senator Stottlemann had given the city of Belvidere some grant money for this and also to the Park District to connect that, and this would be a culmination of that with, I think, Director Anderson, the work to be started this summer. Does that, does that sound right?
It would probably started later this summer, fall, and then finished up next year. But yeah, there's actually four different grants involved in this project. So, from an administration standpoint, that'll be a nice one to be finished with.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. So, we have a motion on the floor. If there's any other questions, feel free to ask, and if not, we'll go ahead and take a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And if there's any opposed. All right. Motion passed. Thank you. Thank you, Director Anderson. Certainly appreciate it. Item five, other unfinished business. We have none. Item six, other new business. Item A, in your packet is a memo from City Attorney Drella regarding fireworks within the city of Belvidere. That's an amendment of section seventy-four dash two-twenty-one regarding our fireworks, the city code of regarding our fireworks. The recommended motion would be a motion, actually, I'll go ahead and read the entire memo. In twenty-twenty-three, the, twenty-twenty-three, the city council increased the minimum fine for using unlawful fireworks in the city to five hundred dollars. The goal was to dissuade those who previously utilized illegal and dangerous fireworks from doing so in the future. Unfortunately, individuals continue to unlawfully use certain fireworks within the city. As such, the administration now recommends increasing the minimum, minimum fine for possession or using illegal fireworks in the city of Belvidere to seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars. Similarly, the administration recommends increasing the maximum fine for the non-home rule, maximum fine of seven-hundred-and-fifty to fifteen-hundred dollars. So, the recommended motion, we're looking for is a motion to approve an ordinance amending section seventy-four dash two-twenty-one G to increase the minimum fine to seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars and the maximum fine to fifteen-hundred dollars and to include injury to, and to include injury to persons or property as factors, as factors to be considered in aggravation. So, if I could have a motion to that effect, motion by Alderman Peterson and a second by Alderman Hoynes. Thank you both. Any questions, any comments? We'll try and answer them. Alderwoman Gramkowski?
Thank you, Mayor. How many citations were written last year, do you know?
No, not off the top of my head, but I could research that and get back to you.
All right. We'll get that. Alderman Peterson?
I have a question for Attorney Drella. Can, can any part of that be enforced as part of the extraterritorial control of the city? Can you make, because if you're, if you're living adjacent to somebody, if you're on the city, city limits, if you're on the city boundary, is, is there any way that the city can also keep that from, stuff from being blown off within, within the city from neighboring properties or not?
I had researched it. My gut reaction is no, because typically we can enforce our ordinances within our own jurisdiction or within territories that subject to a pre-annuation agreement with us. So, for example, currently in the Deer Hills neighborhoods, they would not be able to use the fireworks because of sub-ordinances. Unlike some of our subdivision codes and things like that, some extraterritorial, extraterritorial zoning issues, your general ordinances do not extend beyond your corporate boundaries. But if you want, I could research that.
I was just going to say, and precisely because it might become a fact in Deer Hills if that, if that, in fact, doesn't get brought in, there, there might be some issues out there eventually. We might be getting complaints whether we want them or not.
I agree. And you know, the purpose of the ordinance was the same one that we raised it in twenty-two three to, is the fact that we did, the city didn't, but Garden Prairie, I believe it was, it had a gentleman was, basically blew his head off by using illegal fireworks, and it happened in front of, it's my understanding, in front of his young family member, and, which is a tragedy. But a worse tragedy would have been if it would have been that son, his, his kid, or any other innocent person that would have been, would have suffered a fatality because of it, and that certainly is uncalled for. Not to mention, I know that I've had concerns, and I brought it up to Chief Shadle, about when the fireworks season, these actually start way before the Fourth of July, but a lot of times, we've had such a dry summer, and, and I've, they've had them go on roofs, and certainly, those are another added risk for people that may not even be able to get out of their home. I mean, you have senior citizens that may be in their home, and you're lighting these mortars off, and they're going on the roof, or they could go into their house. It's certainly illegal, and it is definitely, you know, a safety hazard and a concern. So, that was the reason behind it. If anybody has any comments, feel free to ask, and we'll try and answer them, that's for sure. Alderman Peterson?
Thanks, Mayor. Just one other comment, and Director Anderson, I don't know if any other municipalities put up any kind of temporary signage that would tend to give people a heads up that, you know, they need to be aware of this as a fireworks prohibitive municipality, and the fines are going to be, you know, of us and such, whatever they are. Kind of, I think maybe getting the word out and making sure people understand in ignorance of the law isn't going to be an excuse, but I hate to see somebody genuinely not know it's going to be a very expensive fine if they screw up.
Chief Woody?
Yeah, if I may. We post something every year on Facebook with just that, what the law is, what the violations are, and ultimately, what the consequences are. And we also, in addition to Facebook, we take out a page ad in the shopper doing the same thing.
Very good. If there's any other questions, Alderwoman Gramkowski, then Chief Shadle, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief Woody, do you issue a citation first, and then if you have to come back, then they, or I'm sorry, a warning first? And then if they come back, they get a citation? How does that work?
Sometimes it's officer discretion, but most recently, it's been a zero tolerance policy. So, if we get a complaint, we go out there, we can prove, or we get a complainant who's willing to identify who the violator is, we'll write the citation, seize any illegal fireworks.
Chief Shadle?
Thank you, Mayor. Alderman Peterson, I was just going to add to what Chief Woody said. We also do a social media and public education every time towards the Fourth of July, and I remember last year, it was extremely, extremely dry at the same time, so it was, I was very concerned as I would hear all the explosions around my house, that if something lands in a bush or next to a house and someone doesn't notice, then it, it does happen. It does happen, but we can also, this year, include information on the ordinance update.
Fair. All right. All right. And as the council may recall, for years, there was a illegal fireworks stand that was out in the county, and one of the issues that I'd had was that enforcement, I tried to get the county to go out and enforce and to shut down the illegal fireworks stand. Thankfully, Chief Woody, and he'd used the state police to go, and lo and behold, they supposedly hadn't been selling illegal fireworks, and we ended up with, I believe, two storage trailers full of them. So, storage bins full of them. So, you know, he did, our police department, with the help of the state police, they shut that down, and I want to thank Chief Woody because had somebody been injured or somebody been killed, that is the law, and I appreciate you, chief, for enforcing the law. And without it, I don't think we'd have been able to get it done, but we did. And so, thank you very much to you, Belvidere Police Department and the state police. Thank you. But that was a real confuse, that was real confusing for residents, because, you know, I was getting calls, and they were saying, Mayor, you know, I got a ticket or whatever because of illegal fireworks. You're selling them in the city. I'm like, no, we're not selling them in the city. Well, we're, you're selling them out, out on twenty. And I said, well, we're not, but they're illegal there, they're illegal there as well, and they're illegal in the state of Illinois. And the problem is, is that a lot of people, a lot of seniors, a lot of, there's people with PTSD, there's people who have pets, and that time of year is totally, is totally just lawless. And so, we did, we did take care of that, and again, I want to thank, I want to thank you, chief, for that. So, a little bit of background on what has provoked this. We may have a little bit, we may have a few slow learners, but I think anybody who listens to fireworks for months before and months after the Fourth of July holiday, I think they understand, and I think the citizens have been more than happy whenever we do this enforcement. But if there's any other questions, I'll try and answer them. Alderman Hoynes?
This is for chief. You said you, when you go out and you just give them a warning, do you, if your officers are just giving warnings, are they confiscating every piece of fireworks that they have that they can see? And then, are they giving the, the ticket? Or how's that, how's that actually work?
Yeah, no. In recent years, it's been a zero tolerance policy on fireworks, so the officers go out, if they're able to identify who the violators are, or they have a complainant who's willing to cooperate with the city ordinance violation, then we would write them, write the violator a ticket, and then seize the illegal fireworks. Either way, I mean, there, there's always discretion on the officer's side. If the officer ran into a, a situation that they felt discretion was necessary, they would still be required to seize the illegal fireworks.
Okay? All right. We have the motion on the floor. I think the goal is to make sure that people understand that we have a policy of zero tolerance, and I think the majority, you're never going to make everybody happy, but you will make the majority of people happy, I do believe, and I've received a lot of calls about it, and I don't blame them. So, if there's no other points, no other discussion, we have a motion on the floor. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And if there's any opposed. All right. Motion passed. Thank you. That's all we have on the agenda this evening. I could use a motion to adjourn. Motion by Alderman Peterson, second by Alderman McGee. Thank you both. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody want to stay? All right. For the record, we adjourn six-thirty-eight PM. Thank you, everybody, for your evening, and have a good rest of it.